So it's in part two of the series that we meet our protagonist Jeremy Honak and he's seventy-three years old. Just joined the school board in the midway process of them trying to push through this equity statement. And I'll just say this and leave it at this. He's the only person who is not of the hive mind in regards to the culture they're trying to change and the reasons why. And so him showing up midway through this has created quite the little interesting dynamic that's about to play out. And the first episode was an hour. This one's gonna be about an hour as well, but I'm telling you it is well worth the sit down and the listen. So let's get right into it. So this is the meeting where he's trying to bring to light what's happening behind this equity statement. And he never really gets to talking about the equity statement because again, he's kind of hard to listen to. He wants to start all the way out here in the abstract and then bring it back into focus and they won't even let him tell his backstory. Watch how he is shut down by this room full of people and watch how they do it and how they use their positions of power to shut him down because it's very interesting to watch. Alright.
Okay, so first off, I just want to say they're governing board norms. We all signed it. I signed it. And but there's something that that trumps that is I signed, actually had to swear before Steve Loxon that I, Jeremy Honak, solemnly swear or affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona, bear true faith and allegiance to say and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and partially discharge the duties of the governing board. So help me God. I have mine divided into three sections, where we are now, how we got here, and what we gotta do. Okay, we have a very nice school district with beautiful buildings, talented teachers, and an area that is relatively affluent compared to the rest of the world. But our district does have a serious problem because his job is to teach kids with only fifty-six or fifty-seven percent of them proficient at reading and math. So if a student gets fifty-six percent right on an English test or fifty-seven percent right on a math student test, that student gets two Fs and no A pluses. They fail. If those rules were what a student and the parents have to live with, how is it fair to judge the school district differently? The governing board over I don't know how many years still can't figure out what its number one goal is. And it has set a timeline of almost a year to figure out what that is. That year is almost up and not a word about what the goal is. Instead, the board with no community-wide collaboration, ignoring available facts, surrendered its judgment.
Okay, so he hasn't been interrupted up until now, except by me, I guess. And now he's starting to talk about the equity statement, right? He's saying that there was no public comment. So now he's just now starting to get into the equity statement and let's see what happens.
Referring to the norms to special interest groups who pushed for a plan to micromanage the school district with racist theories that are harmful to students till the end of time or the total destruction of the school system, whatever comes first. Now let's just do a little math. I know what they are. Don't patronize me, please. Okay, I know what they are and I am referring to that. And you can object all you want. Objection denied. And let's proceed.
When I was telling you guys about how this entire time he couldn't bring it to the light to parents because they kept saying it wasn't on the agenda. That's what they're doing here. Even though he proposed changing the contracts to prevent the equity statement from happening, they're now telling him because he's taking too long to get to the point that you're off topic and you're not allowed to do that. And she's telling him you'll go to jail. You're subject to fines. As a lawyer, it's my duty bound to tell you.
I'm talking about the contract. I am talking about the contract. I'm explaining why we need a contract, okay? The, this was done under fraud. This was done under fraud. The, the, you know, you could sit in here and henpick me to death, okay, but I will read, okay? And I will explain to you. If you sit back, you know. How so? I'm talking about, I'm talking about the teacher contract because this, and the reason we need it, and it's a reason that I would find any legal scholar would agree with me on, is the fact that something has been put upon this school district with fraud. The public knows it. The public has unanimous, they've unanimous written forty or so letters and zero letters in support of this. In support of changing the teacher contract and in support of the fact that they feel that this equity thing and all this other stuff was done fraudulently, it was done, talk about violation of open meeting laws. These people violated an open meeting law by hiding what they were doing. And that's what I'm gonna explain right here. So. And what about the twelve thousand parents out there? What about them? And this is the reason why the public wants. And this is the reason why the public wants this in the contract. So we're here to talk about teachers' contracts and we have forty letters of people in the public that say the teacher's contract needs to say this because, because. So actually.
Yeah, they have forty letters because you reached out to people and caused a controversy where there wasn't any. Ooh, somebody is a little bit mad that her subversive documentation got handed out to the public.
My going and talking to the public about school business, I'm the enemy because I'm not in this little maven of everybody staring at me because I'm not holding your little secrets. You guys lied. I was truthful. I was, and I have it documented how you concealed it and all. So I'm here to talk about the contract, if you, you know, and if. Yeah, why don't we just do that? Because you know what? We'll be here till three. I can read through it. You can say. And I am representing forty people that said they want the contract changed and I'm explaining why. So and you're not giving me the opportunity to do so, okay? Yeah, you know, I am right. And I hope this meeting is being recorded right now since we're not. Okay. Alright.
See, now how could you not feel attacked? You're in a room with five people, you included, and the other four people are doing that to you. They're also the people who you're trying to expose for doing what they've done. It's a difficult position this man is in and there's no good way to do it. You can only do it, but I hope that people seeing him do this is inspiration because this is what we have to do.
Now with the, the equity statement, there were close to forty letters that hate it for reasons that are well-stated, logical, and based on facts. There were exactly zero point zero zero letters praising the equity statement. You know, maybe there are a few people out there, but it was pretty safe to say that almost everybody in the district, everybody in the district is, is against this. I am advising you that while I am talking. I'm talking about. I am talking about the contract, excuse me. I am talking. You've already said that and you're talking over me. You're going against the will of the people and you're going against the will of, I think, thousands of parents out there that think this, think this, that this contract has to be changed. It's the only way they're gonna protect their children and it's the only way they're gonna wanna have their kids go to the school or otherwise they're gonna take them out. So that's, that's, you know, if, if, that, that is the will of the people there and somehow the board feels like whatever they do here and if they think they technically complied with the law, which they actually didn't, but they don't wanna hear about it, then, but that's it. It's, that's it. The, 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 the will of the people out there, they've written letters, they're very eloquent, they're retired teachers, just people that have cited facts and statistics and studies and on and on and on, saying why this is bad and why it's harmful and why they feel the need for protection. Hundred percent. So we're gonna sit here, y'all proud to be here and say, yes, we're doing our great dignified job of, of, of screwing kids with this critical race theory is, is a wonderful thing, you know?
Oh, he mentioned critical race theory. Alright, we're done. Nice hair.
Can hear us? Kim Moran, how do you vote?
Kimberly Moran, yay.
Jeremy Honak, how do you vote?
I vote absolutely nay for this despicable people ignoring their duty here.
Thank you. Melissa Zidoma, how do you vote?
Melissa Zidoma, yay.
Danielle Clymer, I am yay. Motion carries. Contracts have been approved.
I motion to adjourn.
I will second that. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
So they shut him up pretty good, right? He tried to bring it to the forefront. Now, mind you, he was using kind of a roundabout way to talk about the equity statement through talking about the teacher contracts and, but he made the mistake of handing in writing the suggested changes that he had. So the school superintendent knew exactly what his intent was that day and that's why the school lawyer was there to shut him down. So he was shut down and shut up and what happened in that interaction is, is he had a lot of stuff written down and it was very articulate and he would have been able to read it. But they kept interrupting him and they kicked him off kilter and then he was just going off the cuff trying to remember the things that he wanted to say and they kind of destroyed him in that. Not many people understood really what was going on when they saw this video, but it wasn't until the rest of the school district found out about this and the letters circulated within the locality of the school and the parents found out what was going on. And then they had finally a small window of public comment on their equity statement. And that's when things got, woo! So we'll get into that now.
As Alex S. and the parent of one of your kindergartners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I need to address you about the district's equity statement and the transformational equity work document. So jumping into it early. I listened intently to the previous board meeting, which got more intense than it probably should have. I understand that the equity statement was not agendized and therefore should not have been discussed. But I am actually very grateful that this topic was highlighted because it forced me to do some research on my own part in the equity work that you have undertaken. Based on that research, I have to say that I'm very concerned and want more transparency from you about the goals of this program. I'm all for equality and that we shouldn't discriminate against students, parents, teachers, or any employees. I wholeheartedly agree with the Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, and that among these are life's liberty and the pursuit of happiness. I don't think that you should have to go farther than that and also that you should not try to politicize Litchfield Elementary School District or its policies. I vehemently disagree with coding Ibrahim X. Kennedy in your equity statement as it does just that. It politicizes the statement from the beginning, which in turn will cause confusion and strife amongst all the different stakeholders. I honestly hope that this was just an oversight, but it's one that should be fixed. While some of his ideas do have merit, much of what this man says is very polarizing and pretty far leaning in political views. You don't need to open this body, which has a near sacred duty of educating our children, up for that politicization. It's the Litchfield Elementary School District, not a campaign speech. Please understand that I am not discussing race. I am here only to discuss the politicization in a place that I think it shouldn't be. Secondly, I worked, researched the transformational equity work document. I wasn't overly concerned until I went to the websites of the organizations that you plan to pay or sponsor to give our teachers seminars in. These organizations support a curriculum that espouses identity and stratification by race and gender more than it does personal responsibility. Their suggested reading lists and materials are promoting group identity over the basic expectations that humans should be respectful to each other and not trample on the rights of others. Their websites, inclusioncounts.com and arizonaeducationfoundation.edu declare that the statements, be respectful and work hard, reach for the top, and have high expectations are all microaggressions by a majority people over a minority people. I don't think that you believe this and I certainly hope you don't. Kids should, kids should be taught those things. They are good things to strive for, not evil. Please don't allow yourselves to be beholden to those who want to push political agendas over what we should be doing in our schools, teaching fundamental educational topics and not politicizing controversial issues. If you want to prevent bias, stick to the facts and stay apolitical in education. I would much rather see our taxpayer dollars go to making teachers better at teaching than to push this type of training. Thank you for your time.
And see, that's been artificially muted there. It's a setting on some cameras where it'll automatically do it at certain decibel levels or it could be being done. But either way, he's getting a much louder applause there than you're realizing. Jeremy Honak is in red all the way to the left there. So all of these parents that are coming here and speaking, they're all there because of Jeremy Honak. That really gotta hammer that home because we all need to get out there and get involved in the same way he did because he's the lone vote in every vote they take, I'm sure. But because he was there, now I'm here and you're there.
I don't have any scripted, written points to touch on. I kind of go on the fly. That's just how I operate. I've done a lot of research into this transformational equity work document as well as Mr. Kendi's theory, radical theory, unproven, without a lot of supporting facts. And I'm deeply concerned for my kids who are in this district. I've had several kids who have gone through the schools in this district for many years. And let me just tell you, my kids are a minority group. I am Hispanic. Never once have they come home and said that they felt victimized or discriminated against because of their race or ethnicity. Never once. Do you wanna know why? Because my children are taught at home the value of people, that you treat people the way that their character and integrity defines them in your view. That is not a place for the district or the board to impose a leftist, and yes, I'm going to make it political because that's exactly what this document is, a leftist rhetoric that has no place in our schools. So I know that we can make public requests for information. I wanna know how many complaints the district has received from parents of minority children about this topic that makes it so heavy in the forefront above their academic skills like math, reading, all of those things. You're not gonna sit here and tell me that simply because we are an A-rated school in a failing state, which is not something that we should all be proud of because frankly, it's dismal in comparison to some of the success that other districts are seeing across our country. You're not going to tell me that your efforts are better focused on something like Kendi's theory than on my child's academic success. That is not what you're here for. That is not what the educators are here for and they should not be burdened with shouldering that when the public hasn't had an opportunity to be a part of that process. That is not what you were elected to do. And just as the gentleman said, that in June, we have an opportunity to recall members of the board. I'd like to ask those of you who stand with me to support my efforts in recalling the members of the board who are proposing this product, as they call it. Furthermore, I am very willing and very open to sitting on any committee that will be doing cargo work from a parenting and community member standpoint on this document because I think that dialogue should not be open to one side or the other, but both.
Thank you. Amanda Miller?
Dear governing board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you and other stakeholders in this room. I would like to start off by a quote by Candace Owens. If your solution is worse than the problem, it is not a solution. I have, I have had over a dozen teachers reach out to me frustrated and upset over what is being thrown their way with this transformational equity work, thanking me for speaking up for them because they can't do it themselves for fear of retaliation and possible discrimination. These teachers are already stressed out, overwhelmed, underappreciated, and now the district with implementation of this T E W will pit parents against teacher and students against students. All the while, the district is wanting to cut their pay. As a parent of two L E S D students, I am disgusted by the documents that have been floating around. Why are we using something so controversial as the Ibrahim X. Kendi statement about racism in our equity statement? A document that has the potential to be so unifying and it gets ruined because of an agenda. Kendi, who said that Amy Coney Barrett is a white colonizer and used her two adopted Haitian children as props. What would happen if we used a quote from Candace Owens, PragerU, Ben Shapiro, Heather McDonald, or the United States Senator Tim Scott? The sky would fall and the board would never have that. But it's okay to use Kendi. The Bible was removed from, in the sixties from the classroom for fear of indoctrination. Now we are inviting indoctrination back into our schools. The transformational equity work is the very definition of discrimination. Not all students will be created equal or will be treated equally. Disciplining Black and Hispanic students differently than white and Asian students. The achievement and learning goals for Black and Hispanic students. You can't use racism to combat racism.
Thank you.
You can't use racism to combat racism. So you can see now that he's gotten this to the public, they are going to get a public flogging over this.
Linda Kesselman?
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I have experience as a teacher. I taught close to thirty years. And I don't know when all of this craziness happened. While I was a teacher, we had a wall that expressed exactly who was worth noting of importance to the world. Those who were Black. We had the Harriet Tubman, the Rosa Parks picture. We had Martin Luther King. We had Thurgood Marshall. There was, that board was switched out all the time. It wasn't just thrown up there as, you know, look, recovering people who aren't white. It was a matter of gaining respect and knowing that we all had to respect each other no matter what color we were. So I don't understand this transition. If teachers did their job, and I'm sure your teachers are doing their job, they incorporate Blacks, Hispanics, Native Americans into their classrooms. Those, that's what good teachers do. So I don't understand the route this is taking. And it does sound political and it sounds inappropriate to me, very inappropriate. And I applaud those parents that got up to discuss that their kids are being exposed to this type of mentality. I applaud them. They're sticking up for what they want their children to be aligned with and that is learning. Learning the right way. This could turn into a very disgraceful period of time for your school. And I would venture to guess that parents, both Black and white, will pull their kids out of public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Kilhofer?
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to address the board. I don't have a prepared statement. Mainly because all of this has just come to light in the last few days, which is really my, my biggest complaint here is the lack of transparency that we as parents have experienced. In a document that actually I can't even access anymore, there was links to it yesterday and suddenly it's not there. It is, I copied and pasted these words. "We are developing a plan to communicate our work to our parents and community. We learned through our CD rollout that communicating this work too early prior to empowering our teachers and staff with the tools necessary to answer questions from parents, et cetera, will not render positive results." Is that transparency? Uh, you know what? That is what really sparked my interest to dig deeper. You know, this is in your document. Further on, the document references reducing disciplinary action by race, reviewing library books, and hiring based on race, ethnicity, gender identity, faith, sexual orientation, socioeconomic class, and age. You know what? We fought and battled for equal rights in this country. This doesn't sound like equal rights. This sounds like we're gonna go higher based on meeting a quota. And you know what? In the eighties, we played that game. I worked in the government in the eighties. And there were jobs that I couldn't get over less qualified people because of the color of my skin. And please understand, I want you to know, yes, I have two white children at Litchfield Elementary School. I also have a Black grandchild that will be attending this district. And Kendi teaches that you are either a victim or you are oppressed. I'm sorry, I don't want my grandchild being told that he is a victim. Nor do I want my children being told that they can only be an oppressor. Referencing Kendi was a bad idea. And the lack of transparency was a bad idea. And when it comes to discipline, I've gotta tell you, discipline should always be subjective. Discipline is meant to correct behavior. We do not have and shouldn't.
She meant objective.
Never have target benchmarks for percent of suspensions or anything like that. Discipline should be based on the heart of the child, the situation, the amount of times that that particular student has been in trouble and things of that nature. That's what got this country in trouble in Florida was specific benchmarks of times that the police could be called. Why would we do that here in this school district?
Oh, no joke. I never even heard her bring that up and I brought that up earlier. I never even heard that. First time I heard it, I've listened to this four times already.
I want my children protected. I don't want them bullied. This is a call for bullying.
Thank you. And last, we have Kelly Fritzler. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
I don't have anything really prepared. I really wasn't planning on coming here till probably a couple of hours ago. I have a little boy with special needs that attends school districts. And I will say I've been involved in this since, say, one, if you're just going to development of the preschool starting.
A little louder, please.
You know, the, the school district is one of the reasons why I moved here. I moved here because you guys have all been so welcoming and helpful and especially this year with the whole COVID online and, and things like that. But you know, after reading this whole thing about the diversity, it really made me stop and think that. the diversity, it really made me stop and think that this will affect my son as well. With his disability, you know, people, when they look at him, he automatically judged. So now my son will have one more thing that he would have to have judged. He has so many friends. It's amazing. He has so many friends of color, of every race you can imagine. And, and I just don't understand why this is even an issue. Why are we bringing this up as an issue? Do we have a lot of complaints? Uh, I, I just, I don't know. If, if there were complaints, then why weren't we told? And why wasn't the parents involved? I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we have to bring race issues, if they even exist, in our schools. Our kids are our kids. They're small. They're young. We learn, they learn from us. We are their parents. I'm more of an emotional type. I'm not very eloquently spoken when it comes to statistics and things like that. I speak from my heart because I know my, my son. He looks at someone and he doesn't see color. He doesn't see any of that. Um, so, you know, I think that this is just gonna hurt all of our kids, every single one of them. There, I mean, it's just, it's, I, like I said, I have so many things written on here that I just, all, all of our kids are equal and I have trained, taught my son. You are just as valuable as anyone else in this school. And, and so now I'm thinking if we, if we have this stated to where, you know, there's going to be, um, race issues involved, that now my son is gonna, people are gonna look at him differently. And I, I just don't see that that's appropriate. I think it's gonna cause more, more division than anything. My son is already in division. You know, with the whole inclusion, they included him as much as possible, but this is gonna be more of a divide for my, my child. Um, you talk about bullying, let's do that. Let's, let's do things that are really important. So, thank you. Thank you.
That's brutal to listen to a white woman with a, a developmentally disabled child stand up there and have to say to the school board, you're making my child a developmentally disabled oppressor. That, that mother should have to even get to a podium and explain that is unbelievable to me. Unbelievable how tone deaf these women are.
This needs to be in the minutes because it's actually what happened, not that
Okay, now Mr. Honak is again, like I said, guys, he's kind of a hard guy to like and kind of a hard guy to follow. But he is now going to recount what he tried to do during the meeting we just went over and then what they did to him. Cause he wants the minutes to be changed to what really happened. Cause he went back and he read the meeting minutes. And just so you guys know, in case anybody doesn't know, when you have a meeting and somebody takes notes on the meeting, that's called the minutes. So when he went and read the minutes, the writing of what happened at the meeting, it didn't say what had actually happened. And so he brought up as an agenda item that he wants the minutes on that previous meeting changed. And so now he's going to try and talk about why he wants the minutes changed to what they were and how that applies to what they're talking about.
Their self-serving thing written by their lawyer trying to cover their butt when they actually broke the open meeting law. Amen. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. There's further discussion or a motion on the, on the table?
I motion to approve the minutes as originally presented, excluding all changes Mr. Honak made. I second.
All those in favor?
I have, I have one more comment if I may.
I just cut out a whole bunch of that, but he goes on for, you know, twenty minutes about, you know, what they did to him and how they screwed him over. And every parent is clapping and paying attention to what he's saying. And even in the face of all of that, these four women motion for his minutes, his version of the minutes not to be approved, for them to stick with the old minutes. So basically just in his face, it's four of us and one of you. And they're like, huh, huh, nay, nay, boo boo. And they vote right in front of all the parents out there who are supporting him and everything. And so here is the climax of our story. This is when the protagonist gets his shot in. So he's tired of being ignored. And he knows something about the little hubbub that he's made. Let's hear what he says, the, right at the end of them voting yea to ignore him.
I just read today that the Arizona Attorney General is, has made a demand on this district for all kinds of information. They are investing, investigating March third and they are investigating the origins of the Diversity Equity Committee. That's a public document and so that's it. So there, there we go. Now let's just go ahead and
Jeremy, that is absolutely not on our agenda this evening. We need to move on. There's a motion on the table. If there's not any more comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay, I don't vote for a lie.
Motion carries.
If you're doing, uh, finding better ways to control discipline, uh, you know, like is good, but this is a danger where if you say that we need to look at a particular group based on their skin color and, and come up with things that fit that situation. Um, then what happens is let's say somebody that isn't part of that race and it's not tailored to that, they're kind of discriminated against because we're not directing things to that, to their particular circumstance and cultural differences and whatever. And I think we, we, we kind of decided back in nineteen sixty-four that, you know, we need, uh, we should, we should all share the same culture, you know? And so that, how, how do you do it? Address that? That's violating Fourteenth Amendment, Equal Protection Act and the Civil Rights Act.
This is him asking the school superintendent this question in front of all these parents and he's really putting the bricks to her now. Good for him.
I think part of that is that we look at all children and we meet all children's needs. And so, um, I would not say that it's kind of like the same thing. I'm not going to, um, do something to one versus another type of thing. Again, it's the same, um, type of topic. It's, it's creating that focus. Um, and making sure that all the children, that no one's getting left behind and no one's getting missed. And it's, it's a, it's a point of monitoring and making sure the interventions are in place for those children.
Wow, she straight went to the no child left behind defense. That was just a rambling, incoherent answer.
Which we would do for any child.
Yeah, so.
But I think it brings awareness and when you look at something and you see it, um, then it's something that you need, you have to pay attention to, uh, to see, is there something different? Um, an additional intervention or a difficult piece that needs to be added in, um, which we, we do on a regular basis with um, all of our children, including our children with disabilities.
Well, the problem is that some of those things you don't have control over. There's things that go on in the homes like that. And this is a distraction. As for the, um, continued learning, what if a teacher feels that the training is racist and decides they don't want to participate? Will they be allowed to skip it or will they be fired?
I haven't gotten to that point, but I've never fired a teacher for not participating in a training.
Okay, that's, that's nice to know. The teachers will, uh, uh, a lot of them that have contacted me will like that. The curric, goal four is, is dealing with the curriculum. And why should the, it says that curriculum should be reflective of our students. Curriculum's curriculum. Math is, math, reading, history is the same for everyone regardless of their skin color. Why does curriculum need to be modified when, 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 when we're not doing that great in teaching the curriculum? It, it seems to me that we need to really uh, put our curriculum back to what's important. Reading, math, logical thinking, true history, not opinionated. And these are the things that our precious kids need to succeed in the world. And the way you give equity to kids is you give them the tools to succeed, the confidence and whatever, not baloney, candy, hootie-dotty, whatever, you know? If they do well at math, if they do well at re-
Well, he's seventy-four. None of that. How they, how they-
Eating, they get, they get, they, they are, they are thinking and logical. They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna become, Ben Carson was a gangster, stabbed somebody and he, he became the top brain surgeon in the world. So, uh, that's, that's just utterly, you don't have the answer. That's just utterly ridiculous.
Um, I would, I would actually like to, to have an answer to that, that question.
Well, I'm not asking you, but you can go ahead and answer it.
Okay.
He's openly hostile towards her because she was one of the ones that was make, that made him feel attacked in the other webinar. And they actually told him at some point during this meeting that they felt that his term henpecked was misogynistic too, so.
Thank you for your permission. I appreciate that. Representation is important.
Representation, representation is important. If you're explaining something to somebody, right? And you actually want them to retain the information, you actually want to reach them. You, you're talking to someone argumentatively. You want them to believe you, right? If you're actually doing that, which is, you know, i.e. not wasting your time, not just talking to hear yourself talk, not just regurgitating stuff that you've memorized. If you're not doing that and you actually want the person to listen to you, then you cannot uptalk. When you talk to somebody like this and you're saying it like that and you think they're listening to you, all they're hearing is that you're a patronizing asshole. It doesn't help. Uptalking should be deleted. Period. There's no circumstance, there's zero circumstances in which uptalking is okay. But when you're trying to explain something to somebody, you've gone from a possibility, a, a, a possible teaching moment to being a patronizing asshole.
It's because that is how they can dream. That is how they can see themselves. Whether that's in a story, whether that is in a math problem, whether that is in their teacher or their principal. Excuse me, I'm speaking. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
That's ridiculous. There's no doubt that-
Excuse me, I am speaking. What I have to support that is my own personal experience. The experience of others that I know, the experience of some of the emails that we received back from people of color and various experiences. It's not just about race. It's about being able to see yourself in a leadership role or in a story that you're being told in your school and showing that inclusion and that acceptance and that love. And I think that would be appreciated and would again, cause all of our students to rise.
I mean, before he even says anything, just think about how horribly offensive that is in a school system where the best racial category is only uh, graduating at a fifty-six percentage of proficiency. Oh my God. How could you possibly be looking at subcategories when the entirety of your student body is not proficient at math and reading? And yet after being told this over and over again by both Jeremy Honig and by the students' parents, she's still doing this. It's all about feelings and experiences and it's not, has nothing to do with facts and figures to her.
Well, if I'm supposed to answer that, I think the, the parents in the room think that's ridiculous, but I'm gonna move on to my next question. Four point three is the really crazy one in this equity, in this transformational thing. Because it basically, if you read it, it gives teachers, the, the goal is to ensure teachers have the agency, I take agency as authority, to adapt, modify or enhance curriculum to bring, bring cultural awareness into curriculum. Since the board subscribed Ibram X Kendi's anti-racist theory, which says everyone is either a racist or anti-racist. So goal four point three appears to be either a mandate or at least permission for a teacher to en- enhance or adapt every single lesson to incorporate Kendi's racist theories. So how, how do you answer that? Cause that's logically exactly what it says.
We did not, um, adopt Ibram X Kendi's theories. We did not adopt the critical race theory, nor did we adopt the sixteen nineteen project.
Um, No, no, I have not seen it. The, the equity statement says, we subscribe to Ibram X Kendi's racist, anti-racist, uh, definition. And by everything, the guy wrote a book on it. He says it in twelve different ways that everybody's a racist or, or if they deny it, they're, that's proof they're a racist, on and on and on. That's not a subject to debate. So that's what we subscribe to, then that, then that's what we're pushing onto.
They just can't help but to interrupt him.
The school district.
I would like the opportunity to respond to that as the person who drafted the equity statement. Do I have your permission to, to respond to that, Jeremy?
Well, gosh, I guess so.
Thank you. So I drafted the equity statement and I chose to use the definition of anti-racism by Kendi.
So strong, so courageous.
I don't pretend to know everything or have all the solutions, but I
I bet you don't.
Can look to others and not reinvent the wheel. I chose to propose this definition of anti-racist because it struck a chord with me personally and spoke to taking action instead of just sitting by and remaining complicit with the gap in discipline and achievement in our district. I'm here to get it right, not be right. I am happy.
So somehow it's okay for her to talk about the gap in the racial disparity in achievement in schooling? But if you're a Harvard Law professor, that's gonna get you canned.
For us as a board, to come up with our own definition of anti-racist that is just as powerful a call to action. But as long as this is our definition, we should give credit where the thought originated, which is with Kendi. This Kendi definition was put in place for merely that, a definition. It is not a manifesto. It is not a word of commitment to follow all of Kendi's teachings. It is literally as a footnote definition of our equity statement.
Well, you don't need to convince me because everybody in this room knows exactly. And you're just revealing that, that it's all about your personal feelings, which I don't think anybody out here, taxpaying parents are, are at all interested in. And they're kind of appalled that our school is going in that direction instead of teaching their kids math, reading, true history, character, how to be good citizens, how to be productive to society so they can have happy lives instead of going around whining, complaining.
Ladies and gentlemen, Jeremy Honak, savage. They should play the Dr. Dre beat and give him a backwards hat with the glasses, you know?
Can I make a, can I make a comment? To the curriculum, please?
I'll move on to goal five.
And the crowd goes wild and the, boy, the rest of the school was mad at him.
I just thought maybe we'd stick with the curriculum part before we moved on. Would that be okay?
Oh, you're, I didn't know you were gonna talk.
I just, I appreciate that you guys are going to make sure there's inclusive curriculum. I have a daughter that has autism and it meant the world to her when her teacher read a book to them that had a student in it that had autism. So the fact is that this doesn't mean we're only gonna have books that have black students in it now and white students aren't gonna be represented. It
Um, that's a lovely story, ma'am. And yes, we understand that emotion is what drives you. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a document that said that they were going to lower the percentage of black students who got suspended by five percent, lower the percentage of students who, or change the punishment for, uh, library books based off of race and hire people based off of race. That's what people are talking about here. We're not talking about who's represented in books and nobody really cares about that. You can diversify that until you're purple in the face. We're talking about the stuff that is ideological subversion.
Doesn't mean that's all we're focused on because there's a whole lot of ways that diversity can be seen between different religions, different backgrounds. There's a lot of different ways that this can be seen and we have to stop focusing on one area and jumping to conclusions based on one definition and an equity statement that infers all these changes are gonna be made. Because again, my daughter was happier because she was able to see herself in something and that matters.
Nobody's saying it doesn't.
But I just want to remind the board that it's wonderful that you have personal experiences. But your job, it says, the first requirement of the board and its duty. The governing board is responsible to the people of the district. The governing board is responsible to the people of the district, not their own personal experiences. And therefore should be aware and therefore should be aware of the opinions and attitudes of the community instead of shutting up somebody that expresses them in a board meeting when it's on the agenda. And as representatives of the people who own and support the schools and accept the responsibility to identify community attitudes instead of scorning somebody at a meeting that, that says what the letters are and saying, oh, all those letters don't count because I informed the community of what's going on. So let me move on to number five. Let's just go home. I think we've had enough. I don't need to give a report of where I'm at because I think I've spoken enough. Goal five. Goal five, thank you. Goal five, how do you increase, we're having fun here, aren't we? We having fun?
I'm having fun.
How do you increase the diversity of applicants by race? That is illegal. The diversity of hiring should be based on applicant's ability to excel at their job regardless of their skin color. Are they good? Are they bad? Are they good for the job? Are they bad for the job? And to sit here and make a, a goal about increasing it by race is illegal. And if, and if that goal is absurd and if HR does not understand it, they should be replaced immediately. That's my last question. How do you respond to that?
I don't know if that was a question or a statement, but in, in the area of recruitment, hiring and retention, it is very important to expand the recruitment strategies, especially in the area of education. We are in a teacher shortage. And we are in dire straits with that. And so just recruiting in the same old typical place doesn't always help. And so my goal is to ensure that we have the most robust candidate pool for our leaders to select from, and they will select the best candidate for the position. But they should have a very robust candidate pool to select from.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
This is just one instance that I'm highlighting to bring this topic to the forefront, but it's happening all across the country. And I'm telling you right now, the subversion comes from the small positions, the school boards, the mayors, the city councils, the district attorneys.
Um, I do have a question about, since the transformational equity document has been sent out by a board member, even though it was an internal document, is it common practice for the districts to share very starting, working documents?
This woman is literally gonna bring it up in the board meeting. She's butthurt that he brought that document to the public. She's mad that they weren't able to continue on enacting their subversive policies and they got caught. And she's gonna bring that up with the parents sitting right there.
Documents with the public before they have fleshed out what that looks like, what the plan is. Like, is that a common practice for the district to do that?
No, we usually work through the document, work through all the kinks of whatever the implementation may be. As you can tell, it'll be an ever-changing document because we're continuing to learn. This is new work and definitely very hard work. And getting lots of feedback from all different areas. So it will be a work in progress and will continue to change.
So right, so this was always the plan for us to be talking at this board meeting about this regardless of what has happened over the last month. We were always meeting tonight, talking, even go back to the February board meeting minutes and agenda items and the documents attached there. So the district was not keeping this a secret from anybody.
So now you understand why she's doing this line of questioning. She's, they're trying to cover down. And what she's saying is all true, sure, but also they were definitely hiding what they were doing because they weren't coming out and saying, these are gonna be the results of all this policy. They were all passing something that they were talking about on the surface, but that they all were very much well aware of would have real consequences culturally in the society. And this is the kind of stuff that's really frustrating. You're not even, they're not even aware they're being subversive agents. But when you know you're gonna change the society without letting them know and you're doing that policy without outwardly telling everybody the nuts and bolts of the policy, that's what you are.
Said it was a draft, internal document. Yes, thank you. But the goals had been shared out.
And to further comment on that, just to be sure that the facts are available to everyone, this equity statement was discussed in two study sessions, one in October and one in December by the board that was assembled at that point in time.
Now, keep in mind, they're going, proceeding on with this, covering their own ass, even after parent after parent after parent got up and said, I knew nothing about this. I couldn't find it anywhere on the website. I was only able to get it because somebody pointed me there. And yet they're still saying, hey, listen, we talked about this in public. We did this in public. Even though they never talked about the real nuts and bolts of what was happening in public. They only passively said, oh, we're passing such and such.
And we received multiple feedback, not only from board members, but also members of the public and employees from the district, especially between that December 1st and December 8th meeting when we came back with the final presentation that did end up being adopted. That was all done in public and was not hidden in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, I just wanted to play the school district's defense because it's fair for everybody to get their say. And their say is, is that they didn't do anything wrong. And it was out for John Q. Public to see. The parents, they don't sound like that. They sound like they're pissed off, but hey, what, what am I gonna do? So, you guys, that's the story of Jeremy Honig. Everybody in America should take his example and take their civics into their own hands because the only way we prevent this kind of indoctrination from being done to our children is by being there to stop it. Absolute engagement is the only way to control this kind of thing. And I know a lot of people wanna just avoid politics altogether because it is a circus. But the facts remain that who is on this school board matters. I just showed you how it matters. And who is on your child's school board matters too, I promise you. It sure as heck matters a lot more than who's president. Anyways, guys, like, share, subscribe to the channel. Any way to support the channel, if you'd like to do so, is in the pinned comment below. And the resources I used to make these, this series are also below that pinned comment. Love you guys. Talk to you soon. Peace.